Twenty eighteen year, so twenty eighteen remains a projection. They are not certified until later in the month of November.
So this document prepared by us does have actual number that is your number that's here? And then when we say actual by September thirty, it's my understanding that a student has to attend school how many days by September thirty to be considered enrolled?
They have to be enrolled, they have to be legally and officially enrolled on September thirtieth. So if they, if they arrive there on September fourth, or if they arrive there on September twenty-fourth, if they're legally and officially enrolled, and there are a bunch of criteria to say whether you're legally and officially, but if you're legally and officially enrolled and on the books on the thirtieth of September of a given academic year, then you are legally enrolled in that school and you are an actual student at that school.
Does that metric have any equation that factors in attendance? Do you have to have attended any day to be considered enrolled?
So again, there's, there's a number of criteria, but if you're enrolled, you're enrolled, or if you're disenrolled, then you're disenrolled. If you're, you know, if you're enrolled at that day, you can be sick on the thirtieth and not there that day, but you're still officially enrolled on the thirtieth. You still count as an enrolled student as long as all of the documentation and criteria have been met.
I understand. Let's say my child attends one year, the next year I don't have to register them if they're going to the same school. Their schedule will be produced, it will be presumed that they're returning to that school if they're promoted to the next grade, so they are registered as going to the school. Does it, do they have to have attended the school any number of days to be reflected in this number of actual student at the school? When you say there's a number of things that have to occur, is attendance one of those number of things?
You have to be a viable student there. There's no trigger that says if you've missed forty days of school, you're now disenrolled or kicked out of school. You're, you know, you're entitled under the constitution of the state of Maryland to a free and appropriate education, and if you're enrolled in that school, meeting the state's criteria, you're counted as a student. Remember that actual enrollment is a snapshot in time, right? I mean, every day into Octo, if you're in a growing school zone, whatever snapshot you take in September, in all likelihood, that school's gonna have more students in it by November thirtieth, or by January thirtieth, or by March thirtieth. That number's not synchronized again until the following year because the state of Maryland has established the thirtieth of September of an academic year as the official enrollment canvassing number. And then that number is used for a myriad of factors, including the projections, but that's the number that's tied to funding by the state and federal and county levels, et cetera, so. But it's a snapshot in time, it's a very prescriptive snapshot in time on the thirtieth of September.
I'm not sure that you answered my question, but maybe that means that I didn't ask it in a way that it was, that it would elicit the answer, or an answer, so, thank you.
Holoman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I've received some conflicting information from the Education Commission who said that they thought that they did approve the last version of the school capacity ordinance before it was amended to the higher percentages. So I was trying to get that clarified, but in any case, I'd like to officially, I don't think this needs to be a, get seconded, but I'd like to officially just request that our Education Commission take a look at this current ordinance and give us some of their recommendations and thoughts on it. If that's okay, Mr. Mayor. I know they're meeting early next, I think they meet every month. So, but in terms of other questions, and again, this, you may have answered this, I may have missed it as I was looking for other information, but, so when we're talking about what's typically affordable housing, have you found that they have any kind of, do they have an increased impact? Like typically, do they have larger family sizes? Is there any smaller family sizes, or do you treat all households the same when it comes to their impact or potential impact?
So we have pupil generation rates, and the pupil generation rates are disaggregated by elementary, middle, and high school, but they are, they are not disaggregated by whether it's affordable housing or not, or conventional housing. The only disaggregation is if it's a fifty-five, if it's federally designated as a fifty-five plus community, then no students come or attributable to a federally registered fifty-five plus housing project. Other than that, our pupil generation rates do not differentiate by price point, or whether it's workforce housing, or whatever. It's essentially, elementary school is a monolithic pupil generation rate at the elementary, middle, and high school zone.
But I think it also does by type, so apartment, townhouse, and single family, you can aggregate the pupil generation rate by the type of unit, so that does give you a pricing point to some degree, or a type of unit, and I think that's why counties-
Yeah, it actually doesn't.
You don't do that?
Mm-mm.
Okay. But you can do that, to just to differentiate between the types of unit, and that's, I think what, you know, if you look at the rationale behind the town center and the multifamily and the number of bedrooms, that's the rationale behind that, because a certain type of unit is gonna generate a number of, you know, a number of students out of it versus a single family and a apartment, a one-bedroom apartment complex, you know.
Well, are either of you, or any of you aware of information shown? Because I remember during the public testimony, I think somebody mentioned that they, that typically affordable housing has larger families or larger impacts, but I'm just trying to get an idea of whether or not that's accurate or not.
I don't think you can quantify that, I don't think there's been any study that shows that one way or the other.
Okay.
I think the type of unit, the number of bedrooms could be determined. I know in other jurisdictions, they do it that way, so.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
And just for the record, in the county ordinance, there's not a carve-out, there's not a mis薪金利用that work, there's not a carve-out or a special provision for, for affordable housing units or workforce housing, however you want to define that, so.
Right.
Those type of units are treated exactly the same as all other units within the county structure.
Okay, very good. Let's see, I also think it's important to state that, you know, even if a certain school district or area, or schools considered closed, the developers, it's not that development's completely shut off. There's what, a five or six, is it a six-year waiting period?
It's a six-year waiting period under the county statute.
That's for both the city too, right? So, you know, I think, and also, I think it's important, which we discovered on the Rules and Government Committee, that clock, that six-year clock starts ticking whenever they submit their application, or if they submit for revisions, if I'm remembering correctly. So for example, it could be, they could be a year, two years, maybe longer down that six-year pipeline. It's not that we're shutting it off completely, there's, they're giving, but I think the importance of that, that break, that breather, is it gives the city, the county, the developers time and incentive to actually do some planning, to push for some changes so we can get more capacity in the school.
The other thing, that's important, the other thing that's important to note is that if it's fi, if the subdivision is five lots or less-
Right.
It's not, the APFO ordinance isn't applicable-
In the county.
So, in the county, according to county ordinance, so, like infill develop, anything that's developable by rights, so if it's already a prior approved lot, and prior could mean nineteen thirty, I mean, they're developable by rights, so we're only talking about subdivisions, we're talking about subdivisions that will result in more than five lots, i.e. six or more APFO applies, so the small little infill jobs do not go through this process-
Right.
-at all in the county currently.
Right, and I think with the city, we are currently at, I think it's eleven-unit threshold, and, you know, again, we talked about this, because I know some of us were interested in reducing that limit to be the same as the county's, that five units, that-
Right, the county previously was a three, and they recently raised that minimum threshold to five.
Okay, that's good to know. But it was made apparent by Director Gutwold that one of the, I guess some of the rationale for bringing that to eleven for the city was that generally, when that's the threshold for whether or not a project has to go through the whole adequate public facility process and criteria is if it's eleven units or more, although not for all of them, I think for traffic impact studies, it's different. So there are certain carve-outs, so I think it's not, it wouldn't be, you know, too out of the ordinary for us to lower that to five, it's just that I guess projects would have to go through, they'd have to get an APF just for the schools or just for the traffic, but not anything else, I guess? Is that how it would work, probably?
Correct, you'd have to, you know, yeah, I think I gave you, so you'd have to clarify that we're talking about new, and that we're talking, you know, specifically for schools, yeah, so, right.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that's-
Because I don't think you would wanna do it for some of the other facilities, you know, when it has no relevance to them.
Right, yeah, I mean, so that's, you know, I'm still, I know, weighing whether or not to try to lower that or not, but I think it's, warrants more discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all I have for now, so, thanks.
So soon.
I'll be quick, because I know, two quick. First off, I can't let this go, but I'm glad that you answered that question about affordable housing, because if you evaluated that differently, that would be very discriminatory, and I'm glad that you said that you don't look at those differently, or whatever.
Correct, we do not.
Right, so, but my question is, well, one is an observation, to piggyback with what my colleague, Alderwoman Henson, said, the other skewness in this is that you have all of these elementary schools, and you add those numbers up to like over four thousand or something, and then you go to the middle schools, and you're like, where are all those kids going? And you're led to believe, well, they're going to Saint Mary's or other private schools that are not addressed in this, and their capacity should be in the equation if you're relating capacities to development. So there is this skewness if you're trying to make a relationship with development and school capacity, it's not a linear relationship, and that's my frustration in this. But the other reason why I wanted to gather us all together here is that I know that we have a common goal to, I think, and I know the mayor and I ran on this, is workforce housing.
Fred, go ahead, Fred, come on.
Fred, Fred, go ahead, go, he can interrupt, he can interrupt, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to know what happened to all the kids at Tyler Heights, and you're still looking at numbers in the seven hundred range and a hundred and forty percent of capacity, and now it's at eighty percent, that's four hundred and fifty-eight. Most of those kids aren't going to private school, I mean, maybe some are, the Monarch capacity, I'm sure attracted a few, but-
No.
Maybe more than a few, but they didn't attract-
Sure, there's, there's three factors. One, we undertook a redistricting, so all the schools within Annapolis were redistricted, that's enforced. The Monarch contract school certainly pulled some of the children out of the nine elementary schools, and we know which ones they are. And then there was a pre-kindergarten program at Tyler Heights, the pre-kindergarten program at Tyler Heights was relocated to Georgetown East Elementary School as well, so Tyler Heights used to be pre-K through five, it's now K through five, those youngsters are housed at Georgetown East. So those three factors together served to lower the enrollment at Tyler Heights Elementary School.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So what about workforce housing? I know that the mayor ran on, and we ran on, I think some of us ran on introducing workforce housing in the, in, you know, second floor Main Street, or where, so, you don't categorize, but what, how would, Pete, how do we look at workforce housing? What, I mean, is our school capacity, is there-
I, I mean, again, it's the same thing.
Are they carved, I mean, would you carve them out, or they're not?
The only thing that I can think of to qualify, you know, you know, because this has been a question of how you could legislate or carve out anything, is that you'd have to put some sort of criteria, and the criteria that I come up with, that they've applied and been accepted by the, by the state for tax credits.
Yeah.
So that's one definitive thing I can put my hand on, say, you've gotten this approval by the state for tax credits, therefore I can, I can exempt you, but again, I come back to the question of, this is the nexus between the number of students coming out of this development and the impact on the school, the idea, I don't think, just because it's workforce housing, or affordable housing, or whatever, that it still has an impact on the school, because they're still gonna generate students, one way or the other, you're not restricting. The reason why housing for the elderly or age-restricted type of developments are exempted from, and we have that same provision too, is because we know they're not, by, by their approval process, they're not allowed to have anybody under the age of eighteen in that, in that unit, in that, in that development. So those are the types of things that you do typical carve-outs for. That's my best explanation. I don't even know how the number, how, Chris Drumbar, how he came up with the structured park and the mixed use and the number of bedrooms qualifies either, but they just originally exempted the town centers, particularly for multifamily, and I get the rationale, but the nexus is still there, that they could potentially generate students, you know, so.
Yeah, you have to assume, you have to assume that, I guess.
It's important to not, I mean, not just schools, they exempted those, those town centers from all of APF, meaning roads and everything.
Yeah, because I think we can agree as a council that we don't want all of our development to be for over fifty-five, or, I mean, for over, you know, million-dollar-
Senior Living Capital of America.
You know, senior living only, I, you know, so that's why this is a struggle on what the balance is.
And ma'am, can I just, before you, and not to belabor the issue, but the elementary and middle school phenomenon, it's got a saint, it's got a mathematical phenomenon too. The elementary school, a K through five elementary school is holding six grade levels worth of youngsters, the middle schools are holding only three levels worth of youngsters, and the high schools are holding four, so you have to, you have to create those proportions so they don't exactly, you have to mathematically correct for that factor, that it's six years rolls into three years and then goes back to four years, so. But yes, there is attrition, right? So not all of our fifth graders that graduated public fifth grade school go into sixth, undeniably, that's true, but I just wanted to indicate that there is a mathematical correction that has to occur between those three different types of schools, elementary to middle to high.
Maybe I don't, what is, is that people, is that kids? Is that a kid count? Maybe that's what I don't understand. It's okay, it's all right, because it just doesn't-
This is not separated, this is the whole facility, this is, each, the list here is talking about the entire elementary school facility, or the middle school facility. It's giving you the state rate of capacity, it's giving you the number of kids that are enrolled at that school, and the utilization rate is that, okay.
Well, we have other documents, we have an education facility master plan, it's available online, so you can go to look at any one of our schools, you can pick any of the ones in Annapolis. I mean, obviously, here, it's the total number of youngsters in that school, but our documents depict by grade level, so you can pick, within any school, you can know with certainty how many third graders are, fourth graders are, fifth graders, et cetera. So that is all public, it's available online, and it's called our Education Facility Master Plan. And that is a document that, again, is audited by the county's Planning and Zoning Office, the Maryland Department of Planning, and the Maryland State Department of Education.
Holoman Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Gutwold, I think what you were saying is trying to understand the rationale behind a carve-out for affordable housing. And I was, my thinking behind that is that public schools are a public resource, and affordable housing is more or less the same, a public resource as well. And we, the exceptions that you have to do to be able to still provide housing, if you want to build when the school is at capacity, is not something that we, a burden we want to put on people that are providing affordable housing. To have to delay affordable housing by six years, or to have to donate money or land, or the other things that a developer would have to do in order to be able to build housing if a school is at capacity, is not something that we want to do to hinder the development of affordable housing. So the rationale that I have there is that if a person is going to develop affordable housing, we want to make that attractive, we want to be friendly and open to the development of affordable housing, because as a public policy, that is something that we as a government entity would support. I think that you have to provide incentives for developing affordable housing, because why else would people develop affordable housing? People generally, out of the kindness of their heart, don't accept a lower profit margin, they, you know, generally only do that when there are incentives or support mechanisms. So I look at the affordable housing as a public resource, the public school as a public resource, and so using or having a carve-out in this piece of legislation, I think they fit together well. I would want to make sure that our office of law gives us an opportunity or an opinion, just to make sure that we are covered from the standpoint of discrimination. I would want to make sure that a person who's developing luxury homes wouldn't say, you have discriminated against my luxury homes, because there is no carve-out for luxury homes. I don't think luxury homes are a protected class, so I don't think it would get into a situation where they could say we were discriminating, but I would make sure I did my due diligence on that, but I do think that there is a public policy that supports the promotion of affordable housing. But I understand, you know, how does one relate to the other, but I do have a rationale there where I feel like as government, we have a interest in making sure that we promote that.
I understand that, I was, I mean, and it's definitely a policy decision, I was just trying to correlate, geez, workforce housing is something a little different, I was trying to get at something that we would, how did they qualify for that carve-out? And the other issue is that you have to remember, and I will look to Mr. Melnick, but, like you said, but when you look at the justification for adequate public facilities, and the court cases, and the case law associated with that, the correlation is what is the nexus between requiring that standard and that development to either make an improvement and/or withhold? APF has been, through all the court cases, has been held that there's been a nexus between that development and the impact on that facility, and that gave the local jurisdiction the authority to implement that law, and that's all I'm saying.
And I think that's correct, and I think you would need a rational basis, I don't think it goes to strict scrutiny, and, but Pete, you know, I'm happy to speak with you-
I'm playing lawyer today, I am. But I'm just, because I've dealt with it for thirty years, and, and, you know, I just, you know, you learn this through your, all your, your land use law cases, and so it's just, there's a nexus, and that's what, you know, you talk about any of the facilities, you have to make that, the reason why you're putting that standard there is because you're making that nexus between what that developer is being required to do related to that impact to that facility. So whether it's an improvement, or whether it's stopping that development, you have to, and that's all I'm saying. I believe other jurisdictions have done exactly what you've said, nobody's challenged it yet, so that's my two cents worth. I totally get what you're saying, and I, my, that was, two purposes of my conversation was, A, I need something tangible to put to that, say, this is how we qualify this as a carve-out, so I need something in hand that says that's how it qualifies, and second, that would be my only other concern, but I totally get the idea.
Thank you. I would, I, I'm an attorney, but I am not the city attorney, so I would certainly defer to our counsel on what is the best way to go forward on that, and if he said that that was not advisable, I would defer to our counsel on that, so I'll look forward to him giving us an opinion on what's the best way to go forward on that. It may affect me, how I offer support on it or not, based on what the city attorney thinks is our ability to be able to still preserve developing affordable housing in the city. I don't, I will, I don't have a fairy tale, though, that people will rush to Annapolis to develop affordable housing. If we leave the capacity as it is, it will very likely still be that, you know, people will still develop the kind of housing that they develop in Annapolis. But I will ask the city attorney to give us an opinion on what, having an exception for affordable housing, and then what way we need to define affordable housing to make sure that when you are applying that standard, you have a clear standard that's fair and able to be measured.
I'm happy to work with Mr. Gutwold in answering the question as to whether a particular manner in which the council wants to proceed is legal or not legal, or the standard of review of that, of the decision of the, of the city council. I think that's what you're getting at, I just want to make sure that I understand. Thank you.
And I will offer, for your benefit as a, as a resource, Mr. Greg Swain, who's the supervising attorney at the Anne Arundel County Office of Law, is the, is, essentially acts as my AG in matters of land use and APFO, so he's the, the attorney within the county that has the most expertise, and has been supporting the APFO law, including court challenges over the years, and likely has the most boots-on-the-ground knowledge at the county. Again, Greg Swain, thank you.
And Alex, to be clear, we don't have any plan on the table to expand Annapolis High right now? Is that right?
At the moment, we do not, that's correct, sir.
Okay, and then, there's no mechanism for developers to buy into that, to contribute to an expansion of the school, is there any mechanism?
No, yes, there is, actually, the county has a number of mechanisms by which a developer proffers their contributions. We've had a number of successful projects where developers have constructed additions onto Broadneck Senior High School, Meade Senior High School, Hebron Harmon High School, I can list a couple others, but there is a permissible way that developers can create capacity, they would fund capacity onto schools without public taxpayer input. That capacity then adds to the previous state rate of capacity, thus opening up the school and the development can proceed.
So I would be interested for us to look at that.
Holoman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Zagnovich, how does that work? Is it true that they have to add four classrooms at a time, or what is the process for that?
So essentially, there's, and I'll use my parlance, so there is an existing, I'll call it an existing deficit. So the school is already short X number of seats in its existing condition, because if it had not been, it would not have been closed, right? So a developer comes forward, and he or she may have a new development that has a hundred units, or six hundred units, right? So we mathematically know that that six hundred unit development is gonna generate a specific number of elementary, middle, and high school students, we can compute that. They have to not only put an addition on that has sufficient capacity to house the new students that their subdivision will generate, they have to also ameliorate the existing deficit, so their capacity addition has to be large enough to take care of the existing over-capacity condition, plus their newly imposed added youngsters. So the process basically is, it's an unsolicited proposal, it's a proffer, they approach the Board of Ed first and say, you know, we want to put an addition on, at our cost, onto this school. They show us the, the calculations of, you know, how they arrive at that, it's, again, it's an unsolicited proposal, the Board of Education has the unilateral ability of saying no, thank you, so let me give you a very good reason, right? Buildings have a certain size cafeteria, a certain size library, we call it our course space, right? And you can't just keep making high, the schools some unreasonable size. We certainly, I don't think any of us would want an elementary school that has twelve hundred youngsters in it, probably, right? It's not educationally sound, so. They first, first come forward to the school district with a proposal, we vet that at staff level, we then make a recommendation via superintendent to the board, whether they should or should not approve that as a concept. If it is approved as a concept at the board level, it then goes to the county government. The county's Planning and Zoning Officer does an analysis of that unsolicited proposal, the county Planning and Zoning Officer makes a recommendation to the county executive, the county executive then has to put forward legislation to the county council. So for this to actually happen, the public, the private entity puts forward a proposal, it's vetted at the Board of Education level, the Board of Education has to approve it, then it is vetted through the county government, and the county council has to approve it, and then ultimately, even though there's no taxpayer funding involved in it, the proposal having been vetted and approved by the board, and the council, has to go to the state's Interagency Committee on School Construction, and the state, even though there's no taxpayer money associated with it, the state's Interagency Committee on Public School Construction has to approve the project as well. So there are multiple checkpoints for it to happen, but again, as I addressed to the mayor earlier, we have had a number of successful projects go forward that way.
You said there's no taxpayer money used, but once the building is constructed, the cost of all of the materials of instruction, the desk and whiteboards, and the staff are paid for how?
Okay, so directly, so the, the lack of taxpayer funding has to go to the, is going to the construction of the building, they are required to provide all of the furniture, all of the technology and MOI, so all of the day-one startup costs are developer or private finance, but the ongoing, the staffing costs now, so they're not gonna pay for- But the ongoing, the staffing costs now, so they're not going to pay for the teacher in that room, right, the teacher? And then all the costs for the rest of that classroom's life are publicly financed, clearly. Um, at many of these schools though, for example, we may have had six portable classrooms in the back. So the teacher already existed at that building. He or she would just be leaving that portable classroom and coming into a brick and mortar classroom and we would get rid of that portable classroom. So there can be offsets like that, but sometimes, yes, new faculty are hired, which is a new added cost to the public, clearly.
And how often, uh, do these new constructions replace just the portable classrooms?
So again, the, the building typically is overcapacity to begin with. So the intent is that they will take care of that existing overcapacity, allowing us to remove the portable classroom, plus they create additional capacity over, beyond the existing, such that their, the youngsters to come out of their new subdivision can also fit into that school.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, and I promise I'll be brief. Just a quick, um, I do want to say, the more I'm hearing about the, the affordable housing and workforce housing, I do think, I do like the idea of having, trying to develop some kind of carve out for those types of housings. I think that's one thing we probably all agree, oops, the wife, I'm being summoned by the wife. But I think the one thing we could agree on is, um, that we want to see more workforce housing and affordable housing in the city. Um, so I think that is definitely something, uh, I'd like to pursue. But related to that, I also do like the idea of the, uh, giving them the option to pay into, the developers to pay into, uh, fund some expansions. Um, but again, I think the only way we can really get the, get the potential affordable housing carve out to be taken advantage of, or the pay in lieu kind of thing, uh, taken advantage of, is if we reduce the percentages and put those at around a hundred percent. Because if, if, if our schools are not going to, going to get anywhere near that capacity, there's no, those provisions aren't going to kick in. But I do want to also have a question, I think, for the city attorney. Because I'm wondering, there, there is that provision in the county in terms of giving the developers the option to pay into this fund. But I don't think that's in our city code. Do we need to have a provision put in our code, or can we just piggyback off of the counties? I mean, I, I'm, if we want to utilize that, or do the developers have that option automatically with the county?
Oh, no, the, um, the, um, it's prescriptive. The, the county code explicitly sets the, the rules by which, uh, that can occur. So not, not practicing as an attorney, but that's something you might want to codify.
And, and we didn't include that, um, at the time we introduced APF for schools, because the size of subdivisions that can generally afford to pay into a system like that are typically much larger than we would ever see in Annapolis. I mean, two, three hundred new units.
How many, what are you proposing to add?
Could, Alex, could you clarify, in the county, developers can pay into a fund in lieu of APF, or developers can build in lieu of APF?
In the Southernland County, they can actually do both. So, uh, there's two options. They can either self-perform the work, again, this is their proffer. So they can either proffer to self-perform the work.
Right.
And they self-perform it naturally. It, it has to be built to our standards, the means, methods, materials, the specifications. All of that has to be to the county public school system standards. So they can do, they can self-perform.
Right.
Or they can have us do it.
Right. So they can pay.
They can pay, right, they can pay, it's a developer contribution into, they would pay the, they would pay the county.
Right.
Right. They would pay the county, the county budget office would put it as an other developer funded contribution towards the cost of that project.
And have a capital project that would build the addition. The, the difference between the county and the city is, we don't appropriate the money for the school system's capital projects. The county does. Somebody couldn't pay us, and us turn around and force the county to appropriate the money to force the builder to build the, the addition. We don't control the county school system's appropriations for capital projects. The other part, and I don't know if Alex can comment on this, because this goes way back, but when the county established six years, where, you know, it's closed, but it can't be closed for more than six years, it's because the county controls the capital improvement program for the school. So there were issues raised at the time of whether you could put a moratorium on building that could last forever. Because you could, because, for example, we don't control when the school system builds a school. If we say we're putting a moratorium on building until it's open, and they never have the capacity, you have a permanent moratorium on people's property development rights.
Right, and I'm sure the city's.
So there was a link between that six years and the capital improvement program because it fell under the county. It doesn't fall under the city.
I'm sure your city attorney can comment on this as well, but, uh, under the consti- under the constitution of the United States, you have certain property rights that are assigned to you, and the, the public cannot, uh, unduly infringe your beneficial property rights. So, um, it can up to a point, and again, Mr. Gutwold talked about the, the nexus issue. So there's been a number, many court cases, uh, across the country, and when the county created its APFO ordinance, that was all well researched, and it's not always six. Some jurisdictions pushed the limit higher, some lower, but it was generally felt at that time that six, there's enough case law to support that a six-year hold period can be supported and survive most court challenges. And it also does very nicely fit in with the county's six-year, the county and the school boards', uh, annual capital budget and its six-year capital improvement plan. So things fit very nicely around that six-year timeframe, and that's why it was selected back in, um, under the Neil Commission, so.
I just wanted to comment that I will work with Mr. Gutwold in his office to flesh this out. It's obviously a complex issue. And, uh, I'm happy to work with the, the Department of, uh, of Planning and Zoning.
And just one quick, I, I hear you, Dr. Nash, in terms of the size of our projects, but I think it's also important to mention cumulatively, um, that it could add up even if they're individually contributing a small amount. Um, I mean, you know, if you look at Central Park combined with Bemid Beach, uh, that's a hundred units there. You know, we've got Parks and Reserve, which is a hundred fifty units, um, uh, you know, Eastport Landing, which is another hundred units. Um, you've got, uh, Par- uh, Parole Place, which is, I think, another about a hundred units or so. Um, so it adds. And then you have Watergate Village, which is, what, five hundred, six hundred units? I know that's proposed, but.
I think if we can set up a fund and they can contribute, oh, no, we still have, oh.
But if we can figure out some way, because I think collectively, a lot of developments going on, that could add up.
So we actually had, we have a case study. I'd be happy to share the information, but we had, uh, Heveron-Harman Elementary School. They, uh, five developers actually created an entity, a school club. So each of the five individually didn't have enough dwelling units. They weren't a large enough development to self-support a building addition. And that elementary school was closed, but there were five developments within that elementary school zone. Again, none of them were of the scale that could individually support. They aggregated their efforts and on a pro rata share, they contributed monies towards a, a public-private partnership, but the private sector pooled their monies and then put the addition onto that school. And then all five developments got to go forward and build their projects out. And, and they worked all that, I mean, obviously we were involved, but they worked that out amongst themselves and then came to us with a proposal that was vetted through many layers, including the Office of Laws of both the school district and the county, but it was a successful project that's built and occupied today.
Right, and it's because they have, they had that incentive. We're right now in the city, they don't, because our thresholds are too high.
Alderman, attorney?
Uh, yeah, I'd be remiss if I, um, I'll channel my mom here with my manners. It's, I think we have a couple people in the audience that were invited. Did they wish to speak, or is that a, a protocol? Uh, go, go ahead, I guess.
Come on out, yeah. Sure, yep, thanks, Alex.
Well, I mean, do we want, it's, these meetings typically aren't open to the public comment. I know they were invited, but I'm, I'm also just want to raise for the record that it's, I'm a little concerned about fairness in terms of, uh, giving the other side, in terms of the parents, I think, who have the equal concerns and not being able to come and speak. Uh, I was under the assumption that the public wasn't allowed to speak at work sessions. I only found out a few days ago that we could invite presenters, and I tried to get some people from the Education Commission, but it was just too short notice. So I'm a little concerned we're, we're being unfair here to the public. Um, so I'll say, they already had a chance to talk at the public comment period and make the comments, so, um.
I, I was just, I was just trying to be polite because they withstood the three hours.
I understand, we also have to be fair, not just polite.
Understood, yeah.
Who, who put this agenda together? I, I just got here. But I mean, it's all information for us, right? It's all information, please, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Alan Hyatt, Two Hundred West Gate Circle. I have a number of clients that I'm representing with, uh, in the city for a variety of projects that range from very small to modest. There's no large projects in the city as, uh, I think the, one of the speakers indicated. You know, I'd like to confine my remarks to my concerns about the high school. You know, a couple of years ago, the then-city council adopted APF legislation, and that's what's on the books right now, and there was great debate about the high school. We have a unique situation in Annapolis, because there's only one high school that services the city of Annapolis. And the decision was made by the former city council that a hundred and twenty percent was fair under the circumstances, because it was known that there was a significant number of students outside of the city of Annapolis that attended Annapolis High School. And in fact, the information that I have, and I sent you all a letter yesterday, the information that I received from the Board of Education is that currently there are two hundred and eighty-three students that are attending Annapolis High School that are not city of Annapolis residents. The concern I have, we talked about the connection and the relevance and the nexus, and, uh, you know, wh- what, uh, what this bill does is, is, um, it doesn't deal with the, the nexus or, or relevance or connection. This is effectively a moratorium on residential development in the city. That's what this bill is, disguised as a school bill. That, that's, that's what this is. And while the idea, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Savage couldn't hear me, but, uh, you know, the idea is that, uh, it was supposed to mimic the county. Well, it, this doesn't mimic the county's law. This is, this is far from it. What you have here is a situation that, uh, for example, parole growth management area. I know the law was recently changed, but that law still exempts from school APF a project that has fifty percent or more of one-bedroom units and efficiency units, as long as it meets the other criteria. So you could have, and, and we have seen numerous projects in the parole growth management area that have been exempt from school APF and would continue to be exempt from school APF a hundred yards from the city, when you couldn't build twelve townhomes today in, in the city of Annapolis. I mean, you, you take a site on Old Solomon's Island Road, and you want to build twelve townhouses, that, that takes you into the world of APF, couldn't do it if this bill passed, because the high school would be at capacity. And yet, a hundred yards away in the parole growth management area, you could build five hundred units, for example. Two hundred and fifty, as long as two hundred and fifty were one-bedroom and efficiency units, you could go ahead and do that, as long as it met the other criteria, the structured parking and the mixed use and that sort of thing. So there's something wrong. I mean, i- it's not a simple solution, but there's something wrong. But that's why we arrived at the hundred and twenty percent number a couple of years ago. That seems to work fine. That's reasonable under the circumstances and fair under the circumstances. But to shut the city down and put everything in the hands of a jurisdiction that you have no control over, I, I, I mean, that's, that's really not doing the right thing for, for the city of Annapolis. It, it's just not appropriate. And I also want to mention the, the, uh, the concept of vesting. In the county, you can vest schools, you can vest APF at an early stage of a project. So you know if you have schools or not. And you know, many of these projects are, are substantially larger, as, as the, as Alex mentioned. But in the city, we have a whole different vesting schedule, because we submit an APF application, and that's not ruled on until we get all the way through the planning commission in a case of a planned development. So you have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, on a project. And then if this law changes, so you have a hundred and twenty percent going down to a hundred percent, you have, I, I can tell you, there's a, a fair number of projects that I'm representing that would be out in the cold. And to say in a cavalier fashion, oh, it's only six years, okay, six years, fine. You've spent millions of dollars, you have interest expense, you have a, a loan to carry. It, it's, it's not right under the circumstances. It's, it's just not the thing to do. It's not how you should treat development. As much as some people abhor development, it's needed in the city of Annapolis. You gotta have it. You gotta increase the accessible base. There's a need for housing. There's a need for growth. And this just kicks it all to the curb. And, and I think that there is nothing wrong with the law the way it stands now. Maybe you should, uh, consider changing the vesting schedule. Maybe you should consider that the counts for the, for the capacity at Annapolis High School shouldn't include these programs that, uh, bring students in from all over. I mean, there, there's, there's things that can be done to, to make this more efficient, but growth in the city of Annapolis is a oxymoron. I've said it before. These projects go on for years and years and years in the pipeline. There's been so little growth that it's, it's, it's not worth talking about. People make a lot of noise about growth and development, but the growth and development is taking place in the county, not in the city. And there's been so little impact that development has had on schools in the city of Annapolis that it's worked just fine over the years the way it is. You know, we all pay school impact fees. That goes to the county, and so we, we pay our fair share. But it's just, y- y- you're comparing apples and oranges here, and you're shutting down the whole city at a hundred and twenty percent because of, of one high school. And I, I, I mentioned that. I think I have the solution here. Why don't we create the city of Annapolis Board of Education? You know, all these jurisdictions have their own school systems. You want to control the school systems, why don't you do something like that? But, and I say that facetiously, of course, but I, I, I urge you to reject this. This, this is just another anti-growth bill, and it doesn't help students, doesn't help schools. And I think that, uh, leaving it alone at a hundred and twenty percent at Annapolis High School is the appropriate thing to do. And, and you know, Alderman Savage said, we have to do something. Well, I don't think you have to do anything at this point. I don't think that's necessary. It's already been debated. It works just fine. And, uh, I think that, uh, you should leave, leave the status quo. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Alderman Henson, I'd like to.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hyatt, thank you for the suggestion. Um, if I may pose one to you as well. Um, I think maybe a contract high school. Like Marne Ark was able to come along and alleviate some of the overcrowding in our elementary feeder system.
Yeah.
If we were able to develop a contract high school that was able to alleviate some of the overcrowding in our high school, and I think that probably you may be the only person that could maybe help us get that off of the ground. Having access to the commercial properties in Annapolis that you do, having the ear of the development community, having their trust that you do, I think if you were to find that something you were willing to put your support behind and to work on that, that you could probably get that off the ground faster than all of us combined. So if you saw that something that you were willing to do and attractive, I think a contract high school could get us to the finish line on making sure our schools weren't overcrowded and that development was still open. So I hope you don't have to decide now. I hope you'd consider it and think about what we could do to get there, because I think there is a way to make sure our schools, our students are getting the attention that they need and that we still have room for the development community to be able to exercise their profession.
And, and I won't give you an answer right now, but I'll see what it's all about. But I would suggest one way is that. But I would suggest one way is that let's not allow students from outside of the city of Annapolis to attend Annapolis High School. Then we wouldn't be near capacity. I mean, that's an easy fix.
Your comments have been heard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You forgot to mention the naming rights.
All right, someone's got to go and have some dinner. Come on in.
I'm a 1971 graduate of Annapolis High School.
All right, really? All right, thanks, Ellen. Thank you, Ellen.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I was going to say afternoon. I'll try and be brief. Alex Kupicki, 706 Giddings, for the record. I am a principal with Solstice Partners. We are working on the now infamous Eastport Landing project. And I was invited after I provided some thoughts and commentary from Rules Committee on October 2nd to come share some of those thoughts with you here. I did email those to you, but I'll try and sort of provide some additional data points. And I will try and hold my bias aside and just give you some things to chew on in terms of considerations. So, you know, as I heard from Alderman Arnett, you know, one of the objectives here is to be consistent with the county, which I think makes sense on face value. But when you look at the demographics of the city, or any city for that matter, in contrast to a rural area or a county, they're not consistent. You know, family household sizes are inconsistent. And why is that? Just from space limitations. You know, lots are more confined. Single-family homes are smaller. Things are more expensive. You know, so you have a disparity here with regards to disproportional housing sizes and children originated in the city versus the county. So why would you then be beholden to the same exact standard when your growth is occurring and your family household sizes are larger, you know, in the rural jurisdiction? So from that perspective, I think that there is, you know, some progression and logic behind why you would have 120% versus a standard of 100% because of those disparate contributions and household sizes. I would definitely urge you, I've done some initial math with regards to either a six- or a 10-year moratorium on building in the city for multifamily. And my quick math attributed a half a billion-dollar economic impact. And so you're talking about potentially 3X the annual city budget. And I realize that a fiscal impact, obviously, is different than an economic impact. But ultimately, those two merge into, you know, a scenario where you're just left with very limited to no funding sources. I think you should be aware that, you know, each of these multifamily projects, Eastport Landing included, we are paying into a school impact fee. And that's not insignificant. So you are throttling down one of the sole mechanisms with which you have to expand capacity. If the high school is locked, de facto, everything is locked in that case. You know, the city of Annapolis, obviously, is, you know, it was jokes sort of that, you know, I think you mentioned retirement capital of the world or, you know, what have you. But it's a real issue, you know. And these real issues of nationally, we do have a housing crisis. You know, from the perspective of there being very, very two poles, right? The haves and haves-nots. Single-family homes in the city of Annapolis are exceedingly expensive. You know, so we do have a limited stock of affordable housing, limited to zero workforce housing, limited to zero market-rate housing. You know, so there isn't a transgression or a transition with which, you know, you could, you could have a product for, you know, a couple in their 20s or 30s, you know, that ultimately want to grow a household size and maintain a city lifestyle, keep their tax dollars here, have a quality of life. But they don't have, you know, $50,000 to put into a deposit. So I would urge you to really study this because from my initial calculations, this is a big, big monetary effect. And from the perspective of a six-year break, from the private sector, that's an eternity. You know, the capital will leave. It's not going to wait around for six years. It's just going to go elsewhere. You know, so, you know, sort of, and a couple of other things in terms of just data points that I think are very relevant to this conversation. So we just finished stabilizing an asset in Baltimore City. Granted, you know, different jurisdiction, but it's relevant. It's a 292 market-rate multifamily building. We have, we have 378 residents. We have six kids in the building. And of those six, four of them are the age of zero to five. And the rest are between, the rest of those two kids are between six and 12. Now, why is that? Because you have, you can grow a family up to a certain point. And then once your kids, you know, actually get to a certain age where they need more space or they're in a different school district, they're out of a market-rate type of product. So the impact is de minimis, you know, from what we've seen in the actual stats. And that's at Anthem House at our project that we just delivered. You know, so the notion that, you know, multifamily or affordable, you know, product would create overcapacity, it's just not playing out in the numbers that we see. And for good reason. I mean, if you consider a project like Eastport Landing, over 54% of our units are studios and one-bedrooms. Our studio units go down to 515 square feet. I mean, who in their right mind is going to? I wouldn't even, I have three little girls. I, you know, in 515 square feet, that would be madness. So, you know, from the perspective of just sort of practical approach to housing, you know, these market-rate projects now, you just are not there to accommodate, you know, we don't have any three-bedroom units. But that is where you will have, you know, a better, more fluid, diverse stock of housing options that ultimately will have an effect on the city, you know, and its future. So I just wanted to leave you with, you know, some of those stats, what I'm calculating in terms of impact. And what I'm seeing right now is, you know, there is no necessity to create a different function when just two years ago, you know, this has been implemented.
Thanks, Ellen. Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kupicki did speak before the Rules Committee. And he said several informative and provocative things. And that's, I'm glad that he came back to speak to us. The one thing that I found most insightful, and I really would encourage us to think about, is for our legislation, we get a staff report and a fiscal impact, which is very specifically geared towards what the flows of dollars in and out of the city are for the specific issue, whatever it is. But we never really get economic impact. We really don't get analysis such as Alex just gave us about the number of students that a project may generate, which has an impact on the school system. We also don't get the analysis, and I was talking with the Finance Director about this the other day, the fiscal impacts of renters versus owners and small rental units versus larger rental units, all of those kinds of things. There's a whole richness of information that we don't get and therefore can't take into account when we make our decisions. I know that Mr. Gutwold's staff is already overburdened, but we do have two people on his staff doing economic analysis for us. And I was talking at the Audit Committee Monday morning with Julie Musog. And she was talking about profiles that the county has on their residents and their businesses. And I really wish we had the same kind of profile for ourselves. One of the things that Julie said that I really, I hope I misheard it, but I was astounded, was that she said that 51% of the people who are living in the city are not residents of the city. They pay their taxes, other than property taxes, elsewhere. That's a pretty astounding figure. I think it says a lot about the residents' commitment to the city, but also the services we're paying where revenues are going to some other jurisdiction in their second home or third home. But I want to get back to the school specifically. What Alex said laid out a number of things, which I think are important kinds of analyses that we should be looking at, and we just don't get. And therefore, I think we make decisions based on half-information. So again, I thank you for coming and reminding us of some of those. You actually mentioned several other things in your testimony that I thought were informative and actually raised more questions than the answer. But at least, at least we started us thinking down those lines. So again, thank you for coming.
And Rhonda with the last question.
Mr. Mayor, real quick. Mr. Kupicki, you mentioned the Anthem. That's the name of your development in Baltimore City?
Anthem House.
Anthem House. Where is that located exactly?
900 East Ford Avenue. It's in Locust Point.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you very much. That was very informative. Thank you. I think this is a great exercise, right? We needed to hear a lot of that stuff, so. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
All right, where's Fred? I want to thank Shanika for the great job you did while I was away. Thank you. Everybody said you were amazing. Thank you, thank you. Thanks. And Shanika, I'm really interested to hear about that.